Hello, hello. Hey, we are super excited you're back with us. We are in session nineteen of twenty for 2020. We're looking at the book of Revelation and twenty different sessions for the year of, or for 2020 vision in the year of 2020. We're getting a glimpse of what God's trying to tell us in the book of Revelation. We are looking forward. We're not gonna just look back and go, "Oh, man, I missed, I missed Jesus, I missed Revelation, I missed, I missed what God's telling me." We're looking at the book of Revelation so that we'll have 2020 vision in the year of 2020. God's in control. God is good. We are actually in chapter twenty-one. We're gonna be talking about heaven. These are some of the most important sessions tonight and tomorrow night because this is a great message for people to learn more about heaven, or to learn what is heaven like. And so, we're gonna pray. I want you to grab your Bible, grab your notes, grab something to write with. If you don't have notes and you'd like to receive them from us, go to our website at whitestonechurchtx.com. Go to the drop-down menu, contact us, give us your email, give us your, your information, and we'll send that to you. And so, we have Revelation notes for all twenty sessions. We're in session nineteen tonight, chapter twenty-one. So let's pray and we'll get started. So Father God, we love you, and God, we bless you, and God, we declare that you're holy, we declare that you're righteous, that you're in control, God. You're in control of all of our life, God. You're in control of our technology, you're in control of our money, our families, our life. God, you've ordained our steps. You've ordered us, you've created us, you've made us for something big, for something powerful. So Father God, we trust you and we bless you, and we thank you for what you're doing tonight. We thank you that you are God and you are in control. So, Father, we ask that you open our eyes, open our ears, bless us in Jesus' name. And everybody said, "Amen." Let me ask you a couple of questions. Where did you grow up? What was the name of the city you grew up in? Where was it located? Were you, was it in Texas? Was it in the east coast, the west coast? Was it in the mountains? Was it in another country? What was the city like? What was the, the population of that city? Was it a metropolis of a city? Was it, did it have millions of people in it? Did it have a couple hundred? What was the, the culture like? Did you grow up in a, in a swampland of Cajun territory in Louisiana? Or did you grow up on the base of the Rocky Mountains? Did you grow up in a, a place that was hot? Was it cold? Did you, did you have a, a large array of, of summer clothes or winter clothes? Did you, did you grow up in a town that was considered rich or poor? Was it an industrial town? What, what kind of city did you grow up in? What was the language they spoke? What kind of money did they trade for currency? What was the education like? What was the shape of your city? What was the actual shape? Well, that's a weird question. How did people get in and out of your city? What were the, what were the, the roads leading in and out? Those are some peculiar questions, but we're gonna learn about a city called Zion, a city called the New Jerusalem. We're gonna call, learn about a city today in the book of Revelation that's gonna answer all those questions I just asked you. So let's take a little trip. Without a live audience, I often ask this in a live audience, I say, "Let's, let's pick an exotic island that nobody in the room has been to." And so, usually Fiji is an exotic island that everybody kinda knows about, but not too many people have been to. So if you've been to Fiji, just pick another place. But let's just pretend that you just won off the radio two free tickets to go to a all-expense-paid vacation for two weeks to the island of Fiji. And let's assume that you wanna go there. Now, if you hate islands and you hate Fiji, then you know, you're, you're, uh, it could be the Swiss Alps. I don't know. Just pick a place. But let's just pretend that Fiji is the place. And, and let's just say that we're gonna go there. Let's say we won the prize. We won this award. It's given to us. We would start to, we, first, we would go home in all of our excitement and say, "Honey, you wouldn't believe what happened. We won the trip. We got a free vacation to this exotic island called Fiji." You would be, you know, you would be out of your mind excited. So, if you're on this island of Fiji, if you've won this award, then, then we need to prepare for that. So what we would do after our excitement, we would start to ask some questions. So most of us would jump on Google and we would Google in the island of Fiji. Uh, we would want to know some specific things. We would, we would call the radio station up, or we would read the rules of, of the prize that we won, and we would wanna know what kind of accommodations are they putting us up in? Are they putting us up in a five-star hotel? Or a two-star shack? You know, what, is this gonna be a place that, or what, what's our room gonna look like? Are we like in the interior room on the bottom floor? Are we in the penthouse suite up top? Or do we have the whole floor to ourselves? You would start to ask yourself, "How am I gonna get to Fiji? Do I, do I walk there? Do I drive there? Do I have to take a boat? Uh, am I gonna fly on a plane? What's the, how long's the trip? I mean, is it gonna, is this like a twelve-hour flight? What's the layovers? Do I fly to LA first? And then, and then there, you know, you would start to ask questions. So you would wanna know, "Hey, what's the language? What, what, what language do they speak in Fiji?" To be honest with you, I don't know. What's the, what's the currency? What's their dollar bill? Do they take American currency? Or do I need to go and get some cashier's checks? Or do I need to go, or traveler's checks? Or do I need to, to, um, uh, go to my bank and get, trade some American dollars? And, and is it like a four-to-one ratio exchange? What's the, what's the currency like? You would ask some questions. "Hey, what are the people like? What's the culture? Is Fiji an expensive island? Or is it an inexpensive island? Is it a hot? What's the temperature? Is it hot? Is it cold? Um, are there mosquitoes this time of year? What's the, what's the season? I, I know it's like here it's spring, but is it there? Is it their winter? What's the, what's the seasons? What's the time there? Um, are they on the time, same time zone? Are they two hours in advance or two hours behind? What? You would ask these questions, and you should, you should. So as Christians, what's amazing to me is I'll ask believers, "Hey, listen, where are you gonna go when you die?" And they'll, they'll almost always say, "I'm going to heaven." So I'll ask, "Why?" "Well, 'cause you know, Jesus is my Savior." "Okay, well, how are you gonna get there?" "Uh, I, I don't know. An angel, maybe?" "Um, how long's it gonna take in the blink of an eye, in the twinkling of an eye?" "Well, what's the temperature like in heaven?" Then you go, "What? The temperature's perfect. Out, obviously, preacher, are you stupid?" "Well, what kind of money do they use in heaven? Uh, what, what language do they speak? Have you ever thought about what kind of clothes they wear? Or do you need to prepare for like shorts and a t-shirt and flip-flops? Or, uh, you know, like snowsuit, snow boots, you know, heavy jacket and a hoodie? What do, what do you need? You know?" And so you get a lot of peculiar questions, and I'll, I'll ask, you know, "What kind of food do they have in heaven?" "Oh, they got, you know, really good food, but maybe we don't need to eat." "You know, I don't know. What kind of, what do you mean, what kind of food?" Well, so we have a lot of questions. Here's some questions. I just wanna get your mind to be thinking about heaven, the city, heaven, the place. Now, we live in a world that's got a lot of confusion revolved, revolving around afterlife. The Bible plainly teaches that we die once, and then we go to judgment in Hebrews. We don't die and haunt houses. We don't die and come back as animals or, uh, um, flowers or, or birds. Grandma doesn't come back and rock in the rocking chair and speak to us through, you know, moving furniture around or, you know, doing these things. The Bible says, "When we die, we go straight to judgment." So we have to read what the Bible says and believe it or not believe it. We can't have this amalgamation of belief when it comes to eternity or the afterlife. So in this study of heaven, I wanna answer some of those questions. Uh, by no means am I a, a, an authority on this. The, probably one of the best books I've ever written is Ra, or that I've ever read is Randy Alcorn wrote a book called Heaven, and it will blow your mind. But as believers, we need to know where we're going and why we're going there and what to expect. Some people have said, "Well, you'll never be able to imagine heaven, 'cause God doesn't, you know, he, he's not gonna tell you what happened." That's not true. The Bible tells us all about heaven. The Bible tells us all about us as beings after earth. The Bible tells us that we spend eternity in one of two places. Heaven in God's presence, or the lake of fire, hell, outside of God's presence. We don't get to choose after this life, we choose during this life. So we're gonna answer some questions. What does heaven look like? Do we become angels when we die? Do we remember our time on life? Do we remember our time on, in life on earth? Will we have a job? Or do we have different positions? Or is everybody equal? Um, what's the temperature? Uh, what is life like? I mean, what are we gonna do? Um, will I recognize people in heaven? Or do we wipe? Um, will we play sports? Will there be competition in heaven? Will we eat in heaven? What kind of food do they have? Um, will we get to see our loved ones who've gone on before us in heaven? What will I look like in heaven? I don't know about that one. Okay, uh, will we read the Bible in heaven? Will there be a clock or time in heaven? Will we have fun? Or is it just gonna be like a church service in the sky, sitting on a cloud playing a harp? I don't know if you've ever asked these questions. This is the questions I'm asking. So we'll answer my questions. How's that? If you have questions, email them to me. I'll be happy to try to answer them. Will we have an adventure and explore in heaven? Will we discover new things? Will there be music and arts and entertainment in heaven? What's heaven gonna be like? Those are questions we're gonna try to answer. When we're looking at heaven in your Bible, I want you to look at several different references about heaven or our bodies in heaven. Now, or hell, but our bodies are what we'll be doing or what heaven looks like. Um, we're not gonna go through all these. We'll spend some time in Genesis, but Genesis chapters one, two, and three, pre-sin, pre Eve and Adam and Eve eating the fruit. Anything before that is a glimpse of heaven. Now, let's make this statement. If Adam and Eve had never sinned, would they still be alive today? The answer is yes. They were created to never die. Death is the wage or the penalty of sin. So if they had never sinned against God, they would still be alive today. Assuming no one, if no one ever sinned against God, all their children, including you and I, we would be alive today on a planet that was created for us to live eternally, eternally, called earth, this place called Eden, this Garden of Eden. So since that's not the case, we can only look at Adam and Eve's life pre-fruit and go, "Wow, that's what we could expect when we go to heaven." We can look at Matthew, chapter seventeen, verses one through thirteen. It's also recorded in Luke and Mark about Jesus on the Mount of Transfiguration, where he takes Peter, James, and John, his three best friends. He takes them up to this mountaintop. Jesus goes from earthly man Jesus to his eternal state, showing his disciples his, his glory. And there he also introduces them to Elijah and Moses. So we see three different people on the Mount of Transfiguration. We can read that story and say, "Wow, that's similar to what we will look like or be like." Um, we look at Jesus's resurrected body after the raising from the dead until the ascension. Whatever Jesus did during that time period would be representative, represent our bodies in heaven. We can look at Isaiah six to get a glimpse of what the throne room looks like. We can definitely get a lot of information from what we've read already in Revelations four and five, Revelation four and five. So let's dive in. Let's talk about the city first. Heaven, chapter twenty-one, Revelation twenty-one, verse one. "And I saw a new heaven and a new earth, for the first heaven and the first earth had passed away." That means renewed. God's gonna renew this earth. He's not throwing it away. He's renewing it. He didn't throw you away. He renewed you. He gave you new life. Can I get an amen? So God doesn't throw away that which is corrupt. He blessed, he cleanses it. He cleans it up. He saves it. He redeems it. So he's gonna redeem heaven and earth. The heaven there doesn't mean heaven where God dwells. It means heaven like where the birds are, the sky. We have to realize that the atmosphere that we live in is cursed. The trees in the Amazon forest is beautiful and as massive as the redwoods are in California, or the Amazon is in South America, as beautiful as Niagara Falls is, the Rocky Mountains, the Grand Canyon, the beach, Fiji, whatever it is, as amazing creation it is today, it's still cursed. So how much, how much bigger will redwood trees grow on an uncursed earth? How much cooler and more magnificent will the sunset be on a cursed, on a non-cursed earth? So what we see and experience today is part of the curse. The earth was cursed. Animals were cursed. The heavens, atmosphere were cursed. Adam and Eve were cursed. So when they sinned, it caused a ripple effect through God's creation. That's why, and I believe in Romans, it says, "All creation is groaning for the return of Christ," to renew, to set things straight. So then I, John, "Oh, in the first heaven and the first earth passed away. Also, there was no more sea." That word "sea" doesn't mean there's no more oceans or water, no more divide between God and man. No more divide. "Then I, John, saw the holy city," this is Jerusalem, "where Jesus will set up his physical temple and rule the world from, the earth from. Then I saw, John, then I, John, saw the holy city, the New Jerusalem, coming down out of heaven." We're not gonna, uh, when we die, we go to, uh, um, eternal heaven is coming down to earth. So it's not like we go up there to outer space. God is establishing his kingdom back down here on earth, where Adam and Eve would still be if they had never sinned. "God, uh, a New Jerusalem coming down from heaven, from God, prepared as a bride adorned for her husband, and heard a loud voice from heaven saying, 'Behold, the tabernacle of God.'" Here's the agenda. The tabernacle of God, the church, the house, the synagogue, the tabernacle of God is now with men, and he will dwell with them. He will live with them. "And they shall be his people, and God himself will be with them and be their God." What God desires, since Adam and Eve left Eden, since the expulsion from the garden, God has desired to walk with us on earth face-to-face. He's desired to dwell with us. When Adam and Eve sinned, and we'll look at it in a minute, they had to leave the garden. Wasn't that God was in a bad mood and punishing them. It was to prevent them from eating from the tree of life. Well, why would God not want them to eat from the tree of life? Because they had, now were in a sinned, sinful flesh. And if they continued to eat from the tree of garden in sin, they would live forever in sin. So they had to die. God had to redeem them, bring them back from the penalty of death through the blood of Jesus, so that he could then be with us again in eternity. So this God dwelling with them, God being his God, being his, their God, and him, and us being his people, that's God's desire. He wants us to come be with him, to be in this dwelling place with him, called the new heaven, the new earth. Verse four, this is a verse we've all heard. It's usually preached at every funeral. "And God will wipe away every tear from their eyes, and there shall be no more death, nor sorrow, nor crying, and there shall be no more pain, for the former things have passed away." "Then he who sat on the throne said, 'Behold, I'll make all things new,' and he said to me, 'Right, for these words are true and faithful.' And he said to me, 'John, it is done. I am the Alpha, the Omega.'" This is Jesus. "I'm the Alpha, the Omega, the beginning and the end. 'I will give the fountain of the water of life freely to him who thirsts.'" That's what Jesus told the lady, the woman at the well. "God, drink of me, and you'll never thirst again." So when we look at this new Jerus, when we look at this new Jerusalem, when we look at this Zion, God is saying that he's renewing the heavens and the earth. No more sea. The New Jerusalem equals Zion. Zion comes down. God will be his, God will be with his people again in the Garden of Eden. Now, when Jesus says, "I'm the fountain of life," let's, uh, just remember the story of the woman at the well. That's when Jesus is claiming his deity, his godhood. Verse eight of, of Revelation. Listen to this, verse eight. "But the cowardly, the unbelieving, the abominable, murderers, sexually immoral, sorcerers, idolaters, and all liars shall have their part in the lake of fire, which burns with fire, and brimstone, which is the second death." It's reiterating that there will be no magic in heaven. There will be no sexual perversion in heaven. There will be no more lying, greed, theft, envy. If you're a locksmith now, you probably won't be a locksmith in heaven, 'cause we won't have a theft problem. Can I get an amen? So we see what's not allowed. Let's look at this new Jerusalem. Now, I asked you earlier, what did your city look like? What was the shape? What was the, the entrance point? I grew up in Austin. Austin doesn't have a shape. It's like a, an organism. It's like an amoeba. It's this big blob of, you know, it's, there's no shape, but the city of heaven has a shape. City of heaven has twelve entrances. So let's read up a little bit about the city of heaven, 'cause it's one of my favorite topics, and it blows my mind. "Then one of the seven angels, who had the seven bowls filled with the seven plagues, came to me, saying, 'Come, I will show you the bride, the lamb's wife.' And he carried me away in the spirit to a great high mountain, and showed me the great city, the holy Jerusalem, descending out of heaven from God. Having the glory of God, her light was like a precious stone, a jasper stone, clear as crystal." That glory of God is the Shekinah glory of God. That God is the light of this city. Remember day one, God said, "Let there be light." That wasn't the sun. He didn't create the sun till day four. So light is not the sun. Light is the son, Jesus Christ. Can I get an amen? "He said, 'She has great and high walls. There's twelve gates and twelve angels at the gates, and names are written on them, which are the names of the twelve tribes of Israel. There's three gates on the east, three on the north, three on the south, three on the west. Now, the wall of the city has twelve foundations, and on them are the name of the twelve apostles. And who, and he took, and he, and he who talked with me took a gold reed to measure the city, its gates and its walls. The city is laid out as a square. Its length is as great as its breadth. And he measured the city with the reed, twelve thousand furlongs. Its length, breadth, and height are equal, giving us the shape of a cube of a square. Then he measured its walls, one hundred and forty-four cubits, according to the measure of a man that isn't an angel." We've all heard of the pearly gates at heaven. It's interesting to find out there's twelve gates. There's twelve angels posted at those gates, and those twelve gates all have a name over the gate, and it's one of the names of the twelve tribes of Israel. It's interesting to see that the city is a cube, and on thre, one side, there's three gates, on another side, three gates, on another side, three gates, and on another side, three gates. Those three gates represent the twelve tribes of Israel. So I have a question. I want you to just think about, which gate will you enter the city through? Will you go through the gate of Benjamin? Will you go through the gate of Judah? Will you be assigned to the gate of Issachar? Or will God say, "Hey, you're part of the tribe of Levi. You need to enter through this gate." See, I don't know if we'll be assigned to gate. I don't know if based upon our lineage or heritage. I don't know how God will do that. But there's not one pearly gates. We hear the pearly gates. Well, that's true, but we kinda all got this mental picture. Just one big arch and Saint Peter's there for some reason. Peter's not there. It's an angel. And so there's different gates, and so I just want you to dream a little bit and say, "God, I wonder which gate you want me to go through? I don't know." Then it says that there are twelve foundations. That kinda means like floors. It's like a twelve-story building. So we grasp the idea that it's, it's foundations doesn't mean that there's twelve, but those twelve foundations are each named after one of the twelve disciples. So another kinda crazy question, which floor will you be assigned to live on or work in? Will you be assigned to the floor of Mark, or Matthew, or Peter, or John, or Andrew? I don't know. But it's interesting to think, there's twelve floors. There's twelve levels to this city in heaven. Now, another interesting thing to think of is the size. It gives us the dimensions. It says that the city is twelve thousand furlongs long. Some Bibles will use the word "stadia," that translates to about fourteen hundred miles. So the city is fourteen hundred miles long, fourteen hundred miles wide, and it's equal on all four sides. So that city would, would, if it started like in New York City, if you put one corner in New York City, it would come down almost to Florida, almost across to Texas, almost up to like Kansas or, or Missouri. And, and this, this footprint of this city is fourteen hundred-ish miles on all four sides. This is a massive city. There's no city on earth that takes up that footprint. Now, what we can't comprehend is it says its length and its breadth and its height are equal. I don't know exactly what that means, but it's indicating that the height is fourteen hundred miles tall. I don't know how that works, but there's twelve stories. So the distance between a story could almost be equal to a hundred miles. Now, how do we quantify that? I don't know, but this is the description, the city that the scripture gives us. Here's another interesting fact. Look at verse seventeen. "And he measured its wall. It's a hundred and forty-four cubics thick. That is estimated to be about two hundred and sixteen feet." I'm not a builder. I don't know much about building, but I do know that the foundation and the thickness of the walls and the structure, the pillars and the poles will mandate or dictate how much weight you could put on top of it. I think in my house, my walls are about a foot thick, eight inches to a foot thick. The thickness of this city's wall are two hundred and sixteen feet thick. That's almost the length. That's like seventy-five yards. It's almost the length of an entire football field. A football field from end zone to end zone is three hundred feet. The walls are that thick, two hundred and sixteen feet thick. It's mind-blowing, but the city of heaven, this is the description. This is what it's going to look like. Now, verse eighteen, we won't read all of it, but the construction of its walls are made out of jasper, gold, sardex, uh, calcadoni, emerald, uh, all these different jewels. Those jewels on your plate, those jewels are the same jewels that are on the priestly ephod or his robes when he would go into the, the Holy of Holies. Those, those jewels represent the extravagance of God. I don't know, again, what's, what kind of city did you grow up? Was it poor or rich? The city of Zion is the most extravagant city we will ever see. Its buildings are built out of precious stones, out of jewels. Its floors are built out of transparent gold. The city was pure gold like clear glass. We'll see a little bit later, the streets are pure gold. That's not just, uh, um, word picture allegory. That is literal reality. So when we look at the, at the, at the structure, it's, it's pretty amazing. So let's go to verse twenty-two. "But I saw in the temple, that, uh, but I saw there's no temple in the city, for the Lord God Almighty and the Lamb are its temple. The city has no need of a sun or the moon to shine in it, for the glory of God illuminates it." Again, I wanna take us to creation just for a minute. Creation on day one, God said, "Let there be light." Jesus says, "I am the light of the world." The sun and moon are not built or created until day four. So what was illuminating the world for the first three days? We can't say nothing. God just said, "Let there be light." This city doesn't need the sun or moon, because God illuminates it. Verse twenty-three, "The city has no need of a sun or moon to shine in it, for the glory of God illuminated. The Lamb is its light, and the nations of those who are saved shall walk in its light, and the kings of the earth bring their glory and honor into it." What? "Its gates shall not be shut at all by day, and there shall be no night there, and they shall bring the glory and the honor of the nations into it." Listen, there's some ideas floating out there that just aren't biblical. Listen, there's some ideas floating out there that just aren't biblical. In Satan's world, he wants us to look like Hitler's Aryan Army. No, no uniqueness, no true identity. Everybody looks alike. Um, you'll see this like in, you know, uh, Star Wars where Darth Vader, stormtroopers all look alike. Uh, most of our movies, like the movies of, of, um, uh, of, um, the, the ring guy. What's the, what's that movie? Um, the ring. What's the, what's the? Anyways, y'all know what I'm talking about. I'll think of it a minute. All the ogre army or whatever, all the, the weird army, they all kinda look alike. In heaven, Lord of the Rings, there we go, Lord of the Rings. In heaven, God wants our uniqueness. Now, listen to these verses. It says, "And the nations of those who are saved will walk in its light. And the kings of the earth will bring their glory and honor into it," into what? The city. "And the nations will bring their honor and glory into it." Listen, if you're Chinese, the glory and the honor of the Chinese people and nation will bring their glory and their uniqueness into the temple. If you're Mexican, the glory and the honor of Mexico and the color and the nation will bring in their culture and their glory into the city. If you're German, if you're Russian, if you're American, regardless of your nationality, God's inheritance, Jesus's inheritance, are the nations. So, this tells us that there's diversity in heaven. When you get to heaven, you don't turn into an angel. You don't start to look like everybody else. You don't, we're not all gonna be white in, in these white gold sashes. Listen, you're gonna look like you. Well, Cameron, how do you know that? There's a lot of examples in scripture. When, again, when Jesus takes his three boys up on the Mount Transfiguration, they didn't have a picture of Moses. They didn't have a picture of Elijah. But yet, they knew that's Moses. Oh, and that one, that's Elijah. They looked different. Jesus, they didn't confuse them. Well, I wonder which one's Jesus. Is there three of them now? No. They knew that's Jesus, that's Moses, that's Elijah. Then one of the disciples says, "Man, this is a good place. Let's build houses and stay here forever." See, there was a need for shelter. There was a need for identity. So, what this is telling us, that there will be kings of the earth. Well, Jesus is the king of kings. But on the eternal earth in heaven, there will be other kings and you may be one of them. God may say, "You know what? Well done, good and faithful servant. How you handled that small state, Governor Abbott? How you handled the small state of Texas? Man, you're, you did a great job, and now I'm gonna reward you with a nation in the kingdom of heaven." See, there will be kings that are subservient to the king. There will be a rank and order, different position, different, different, um, um, giftings. So, when it says the kings will bring in their glory into, and their honor into the city of Zion, and the nations will bring their glory. I would think that on a celebration day, in my mind, in my little imagination, I could imagine, and just try to imagine with me, a million Chinese dressed up in all of their flair. Their colors, their language, their songs. And then behind them, like the Olympics, behind them is a million Russians. With all of their, you know, hats and their, you know, their, I don't know, their funny looking boots and their Russian way about them. And then all of a sudden, you have Mexico behind them, and you have these big skirts and these sombreros, and you have this, this Mexican flair, and then all of a sudden, you have these different nations coming into. Can you imagine how amazing it will be? When the nations of the world are marching, singing Hosanna to the king, and they're singing in their language, singing with their, their culture behind it. See, God doesn't strip us of who we are. He says, "The kings of the earth will bring their glory into this place." So, again, which entrance are they gonna go into? Where, where, where's it gonna be? What's the temperature gonna be in heaven? Well, that's a unique question. It's gonna be perfect all the time. I don't know. Was it perfect according to you in the Garden of Eden? If you'll read it for yourself, in, in Genesis, chapter two and three, it says, "God would walk with Adam in the cool of the day, indicating temperature change." Indicating there was a cool time of day? A hot time of day? Does it mean that heaven will be miserably hot? No. It just means there's a variance. It's not just seventy-four year-round. You know, it, it's, God created seasons. He created time. So, why would it not be that, as it were, in the Garden of Eden? We have to answer some of these questions. So, when it says, "The nations bring their glory, its gates will not be shut day and night." Listen, that's indicating that not everyone will live in the city. All you country boys are like, "Amen, yee-haw, hunt, fish, and camp," you know, or whatever. Go for it. God didn't ask us all to be city slickers all of a sudden. See, these nations will exist on the earth, but Jesus will rule them and they'll, will be subservient to him. So, what if you get to live in Texas? How amazing will it be to go into the city of Zion four or five times a year with your family, with your kids? To go see King Jesus? To go see the king, to go see the kingdom, the king's domain, the king's territory? Let's not get this idea that we're just gonna kinda float around. We're gonna be in this real space. Interesting statement, verse twenty-six, twenty-six and twenty-seven. "They will bring their glory and honor of the nations into it. But there shall be no means, anything that enters, uh, it, by no means enter it, anything that defiles or causes an abomination or a lie, but only those names who are written in the Lamb's book of life." Wow, the entrance into this space goes back to, he's just rea- reiterating, "Don't take the mark. Get your name written." Question, what if when God created the world and said, "Let there be light", the light there was really just a glimpse of Jesus's glory? What if our sun, who we're told, and I'm assuming is this big ball of gas that explodes and regenerates itself, what if it's really just a glimpse of the glory of Jesus? I don't know. It's just a good question. The nations are Jesus's inheritance. Look at chapter twenty-two. "And he showed me a pure river of water of life, clear as crystal, proceeding from the throne of God and the Lamb, in the middle of its streets, and on either side of the river was the tree of life." We haven't heard much about the tree of life in the whole Bible, except at the beginning and the end. And here it is, back to this tree of life. "Which bore twelve fruit, each tree yielding its fruit every month. And the leaves of the tree were for the healing of the nations. And there shall be no more cur- curse, but the throne of God and the Lamb shall be in it, and his servants shall serve him. They shall see his face, and his name shall be on their foreheads." Interesting. Where's the mark of the beast? "There will be no, no night there, for there's no need of a lamp or a light of the sun. For the Lord God gives them light, and they shall reign forever and ever." Listen, there's a river flowing from the throne of God. There's a tree of life. This tree of life bears fruit, twelve fruit, each yielding its, each tree yielding its fruit every month. On earth, apple trees don't produce every month. Fruit trees don't produce every month. In heaven, they do. This tree has leaves, and the leaves are for the healing of the nations. There's a life, there's a river flowing, and that river brings life. This is the tree of life. This is the fruital soil of God himself. Look at Genesis with me. Let's go to Genesis, chapter two, verse ten. This is pre-fruit, pre-sin. Let's check out Eden before the fruit. "Now, a river went out of Eden to water the garden." What garden? The Garden of Eden. You ever thought about that? The Garden of Eden. Well, what's Eden? No, this is the Garden of Eden. Oh, well, it could be the garden's name, but where's the garden? Is the garden the whole earth? What is it? I don't know. Let's look at it. "Now, the river went out of Eden to the garden, and there, and from there it parted and became four riverheads. There was a river that comes out of Eden. And from there became four different rivers. The name of the first one is Feshan. The second one is Havelah, where there is gold. It's kinda funny in chapter two of your Bible, Havelah is the city of gold, where there's, or the territory where there's gold, and the gold of that land is good. That's cool. Uh, then there's bedellium and onyx stones are there. Talking about these jewels again, it's strange. The name of the second river is Gihon. It is one which goes around the whole land of Kush. The name of the third river is Hadekel, and that, and it is the one that goes towards the east of Assyria. The fourth is the river Euphrates. I don't know if you've ever read that in your Bible. I was talking about this territory. This river comes out of Eden and it splits off four different ways, and it goes over here where the land uh, has really good gold. That's where I would wanna go. And then this one over here is feeding Assyria. This is how God created it. So, would it not go back to the way he originally wanted it? Interesting thought. Uh, remember the Euphrates River represents a spiritual boundary. Um, gold is precious. Um, it's precious to God. Listen to this, and I wanna talk about why God removed them. "Then the Lord God said, 'Behold, the man Adam has become like one of us to no good and evil.'" This is after he ate the fruit. "And lest we put him out of, out, and, and now lest he put out his hand and take from the tree of life and eat and live forever. Therefore, the Lord God sent him out of the Garden of Eden to till the ground from which he was taken." "So, he drove man out and placed a cherubim, an angel, at the east of the Garden of Eden, and a flaming sword which turned every way to guard the way to the tree of life." God removed Adam and Eve to protect them. The best thing that could happen to us as believers, as people who have sin natures, is to die. Why? So that in our eternal body, we can eat from the tree of life again and live forever. That's the reward to the first overcomer, if you remember. That's the reward to you and I as believers, is that we'll get to live with God and eat from the tree of life again. God didn't remove him there because he's mad he removed him there, so that he could save them. Um, it's just interesting in verse eight, in chapter two, verse eight, "The Lord God planned a garden eastward in Eden, and there he put man whom he had formed." It's just interesting that God put Adam in the Garden of Eden, but it indicates that he was formed from the earth. So, it's like this Garden of Eden is a special place. I know we're going through a lot, but let me ask you a couple of questions, or let's try to answer a couple of questions. Do we become angels when we die? No, absolutely not. Your Bible doesn't teach that. I remember sitting in church one time as a youngster, and the person preaching said, "You know, if you don't like church, you won't like heaven." And I thought, "Oh, crap." Last of my life in church? I didn't wanna go. Then I would hear, "Hey, the party's in hell. In hell, there's sex, drugs, and rock and roll." So, I was like, "Wow." Listen, that's opposite. Heaven is where the adventure is. Heaven's where the party's at. Heaven where, heaven is where there's purpose and life. God, hell is where it's void and dark and lonely. There's no party in hell. Will we all become angels when we die? No. Angels are created beings that were there watching us being created in the image of God. The Bible doesn't indicate that angels are created in the image of God. It indicates that humans are. So, to be human's good. Adam and Eve weren't angels. So, why would we become angels? Um, do, will we remember our time on life and earth? Yes, we will. Well, it's a good question. How, how can we back that up? One, the story of Lazarus and the rich man in the pair, in the story of Luke sixteen. Lazarus remembered his brothers. He knew he was in hell. He's, he asked for a drop of water. He wanted to quench his thirst. He had physical pain. But he also had the memory of his brothers, and he didn't want his brothers to come to this place. So, he remembered. Well, that's just for people that go to hell. They remember. That's part of their agony. Okay? We've already been there in Revelation five, where it says, "The martyrs who loved and died for Jesus are under the throne, asking Jesus, 'How long till you avenge our blood? How long till you take revenge or vengeance on those on earth who killed us?'" So, the martyrs remember their martyrdom. The martyrs remember their death, and they're asking God, "How long till you go avenge our murderers?" So, it's on both sides. So, will you remember? You will. Well, then, if I remember, I'll have pain and tears. No, God's gonna wipe that memory, that pain, the pain from that memory, he'll wipe that away. And it's not that we won't remember it, it's that we'll be healed from it. See, today, if you have pain from your past, then we could be healed from it. But that healing can only come through Jesus, not just time, not just through separation and distance, it's through the healing of Jesus. So, there's some scars on your life that, man, they're, they're mi- they're memories that you don't want to relive, but you've been healed from them. You still have the scar. You don't wanna go back through them. But God's healed that. So, when it says he's wiped away, it doesn't mean you'll never remember. Well, I'll be sad. You won't be sad because you'll see the glory of God. Well, I'll be afraid for my loved ones that are still here. See, we won't, if I were to die today, today, I, I wanna make sure everybody's okay, but if I died today, God would say, "Hey, Cameron, do you see how big I am? Do you see how great I am? You weren't in control anyways, and I won't worry because I'll know that God's got it in control." Um, will we have jobs in heaven? Will we have different positions? Absolutely. We don't go and float on a cloud and play a harp. That would be eternal boredom. Listen, some people say, "Man, Joe Bobby died, and he's up there playing golf every day." Listen, playing golf every day is fun for a little while. But then you would go, "Well, what am I really here to do? Just play golf?" No, you're created for a job, a purpose. Well, how can we back that up? Adam and Eve were given jobs in the garden. They weren't just sat in the garden drinking, you know, fruity drinks with their feet kicked up at the beach. That's fun for a while. But even billionaires on the earth that could literally sit on a beach for the rest of their life and never worry about anything, they even want to go do something, cause we're created for achieving things. We're created for passion. So, when we get to heaven, you're gonna have a job. It's what you're created to do now. See, God's giving you that job now. Whether we're achieving that or not, we don't know, but we'll do that in heaven. Um, will there be different positions? Yes. Some people, go back to the reward of the overcomers in chapter two and three. Some people will be rewarded to be a pillar in the house of God, and they'll never go in and out. I do believe that some people will be like on the president's cabinet, like President Trump. Some people will be on his cabinet. Other people will get to visit. It's not that we won't have direct access to God, but we'll have different positions. Well, that doesn't sound very equal. Listen, we live in this world where we've chalked up equality that everybody has the exact same. That's not equality. For example, in the Garden of Eden, before sin, who was stronger, Adam or Eve? Well, that's a dumb question. They were equal. It was perfect paradise. I, Adam and Eve were not equal. They were equal in value. God loved them both the same. But they were not equal in position and power and authority. Adam was told, "Don't eat from the tree." Adam's responsibility was to make sure Eve knew that. God didn't say, "Hey, Eve, where are you? I heard you ate from..." No, he said, "Adam, where are you? You're responsible." Adam was positioned as the head of the household. Eve was positioned as the helpmate. Equal value, different position. So, who was stronger, literally, physically? If there was a hundred-pound rock in the Garden of Eden, who could pick it up easier? Eve or Adam? I would make the argument that Adam had an easier time moving a hundred-pound rock than Eve. I would make the argument that Adam was probably taller, his muscles were probably bigger, and he was probably built very differently than Eve. If they were identical in height, size, muscle mass, everything, would that make them valued the same, or is that our idea of equality? Do you, could you imagine with me that Adam and Eve are walking through the garden one day, and Adam goes, "Eve, last one to the creek is a rotten egg." And he takes off running to jump into the water. Who won the race? A lot of people say, "Oh, it was a tie." Is competition wrong? No, what's sin in competition is how we respond when we win or lose. I would venture to say- I would venture to say Eve may have been faster than Adam. I don't think they magically both dove into the river at the exact same time. I think one of them beat the other. I think one of them could cook better than the other. I think one of them could hunt better than the other. I don't know that they hunted or harvested fruit, whatever they did. Adam and Eve were equal in value. But I think scripture makes a strong judgment, or the strong case that they were not equal in ability. See, that's this idea that we have. So when we get to heaven, we'll have different position. I'm not gonna be envious of Billy Graham in heaven. But I do believe Billy Graham will be so rewarded for his faithfulness on earth. That he'll probably have different rewards. And so I'm not gonna walk around and go, oh, sorry Billy. I'm gonna make, man, that ought, because there's no envy in heaven. Can I get an amen? Um, what will the temperature be like in heaven? I don't know, but if you want to go snowboarding, I'm, I'm praying that it gets cold sometimes. If you want to get a, a tan at the beach, I pray that it's hot at the beach. I don't think heaven's a constant seventy-four. Now, I don't, I don't think that they have, you know, that heaven has temperature problems. But I'm just saying, don't be fooled. I think that there's a sunrise and a sunset. I think there's a winter, there's a summer, there's a spring, there's a fall. I think that God designed this idea of seasons. Will there be time in heaven? Yes, there will be time. How can you say that? Because there was time in the garden of Eden. When God set the clock, the sun, moon, stars in motion, when he set the clock on day four of creation, it started this thing called time. Well, a day is a thousand years and a thousand years is a day. Listen, I, I like to challenge people on that one. Um, and it's a big evolution versus creation debate. That scripture is mentioned twice in scripture. In both references, it's to God, time is a thousand days, a, a year, a, a day is a thousand years. It doesn't say to man. That's the first case. The second case, the only place that people ever use that argument is to back up a argument for evolution. They never say, well, in Noah's flood, when it says it rained for forty days and forty nights, it really meant forty thousand years it rained. Well, when Jonah was in the belly of the whale and it says he was there for three days, that's just figurative, uh, a thousand years, a years, a thousand years to Jonah. So he was really in the belly for three thousand years. When it says that Jesus was in the desert for forty days and, and didn't eat and drink, it really meant forty thou- the argument is never used. And it's not logical in any other application. Will there be time in heaven? Absolutely. There's times for feasts. There's times to work. How else can we know there's time? Jesus, God worked for six days and said, now I'm taking a timeout, a Sabbath. So for this seventh day, did he rest for seven thousand years? No, he rested for twenty-four hours. How can you say that? Because he set the moon, sun and star. He set things in motion. The giant clock, he said, click, and it started. This is why we know there's time. Will we play sports in heaven? I sure hope so. Listen, if I go to play golf against Tiger Woods in heaven, who's gonna win? Tiger. Why? Because he's a lot better than I am. If it's always a tie, then it's like playing tic-tac-toe. It's horrible. It's a boring game. After three games, you're like, this is stupid. It's always a tie. You only win if somebody, listen. My friend Eddie, uh, Winteroth, he, he's gonna play golf better than me in heaven. Now, I've got eternity to work on my game. And, and I'll probably beat him one day. But I don't just go to heaven and bowl a three hundred every time I bowl. I don't just go to heaven and shoot eighteen holes in one. And, and I don't just go to heaven and shoot slam, uh, you know, shoot, uh, three pointers all day. Every shot I take's a three pointer. Yep, three pointer. I'm the best basketball player. We would, I hope that there's a Super Bowl in heaven. I hope that there's competition. That's not evil to win or lose. It's how we respond. That's the fall of man. That goes back to, hey Eve, last one to the creek's a rotten egg. Man, I think one of them ran faster than the other. I think Adam flexed for her and said, watch this, I'll pick that up. She's over there, ah, can't pick this up. I think, we got this confused idea. Um, maybe I'm the only one that thinks of these questions, but hey, I don't know. Will we eat food in the tree, uh, in heaven? Yes, we're gonna eat from the tree of life. We're gonna eat fruit. Will we eat food? We're gonna go to the marriage supper of the lamb. That's gonna be food. Now, I don't know what kind of food, but it'll be the best food ever. We even know there's food because to the overcomer, one of them's given the right to eat some of the hidden manna of God. Will there be food? Absolutely. Do you love to cook? Man, you're gonna get to cook food and flavor infusion that you've never there's such good taste. How good will coffee taste in heaven? Much better than any, any coffee down here. Why? Because it won't be a cursed coffee bean. We've never tasted uncursed food. As good as we can make it, it's still cursed. How much greater will it be? Will we, uh, what will I look like in heaven? A better version of you? It's interesting, when you look at the body of Jesus after he rose from the grave. He's on the road to, um, he's on a road, I forgot to, he's on this road and he, he's talking to these two disciples. And they don't recognize him until they go to eat. So Jesus ate. He ate fish, he ate bread after he raised from the dead. Talking about his eternal body, he consumed food. Interesting. But is, he's hidden in his identity until he reveals himself. And then they're like, oh, that's, whoa, whoa, that's, that's Jesus. I don't know exactly how it works, but I do know Moses looked different than Elijah. Jesus walked through doors in his eternal body. Physical boundaries didn't matter. He ate food. They touched, Thomas touched the, the scar in his hand. Meaning somebody may go, wow, where did you get that scar? Man, you wouldn't believe what happened there. But let me tell you how God rescued me from that. Are, are you with me? Are you gonna be blind? If you're blind here, are you gonna be visionally impaired in heaven? No, God's gonna heal you. If you've lost your limbs in war, like my friend Jay, man, God's got some legs. God's got a mind. Let me ask you a question. Who is the smartest guy to ever walk the planet? What, other than Jesus? Okay, we got the Jesus card, okay. Other than Jesus, who is the smartest person to ever walk the planet? It wasn't Einstein. It wasn't a rocket scientist. It was Adam. His mind, pre-fruit, had no corruption. He had no mental blockage. Now, did Adam know everything in the garden? Some people say, well, as soon as I walk through the gates, I'm gonna know everything. Let's just pretend, as soon as you walked into heaven, that you all of a sudden knew everything. Wow. Boring. Hey Cameron, you wanna go talk to Jonah who was in the belly of the whale for three days? No, I already know all about it. Hey Cameron, do you wanna go over there and, and, uh, and listen to what Jesus is teaching on John three sixteen? Jesus is gonna actually teach tomorrow in this, uh, over at the beach on John three sixteen? No, I know all about it. See, if, if you know everything when you get into heaven, that will be eternal boredom. Purposeless. When you get into heaven, you're not gonna know hardly anything about heaven. Adam learned about animals and named them. Adam didn't, didn't, didn't just go, okay, God, whatever, zebra, camel, donkey, uh, uh, aardvark. No, he studied that animal. He watched it do its thing. He tracked it. He learned its behavior. He classified it and named it intelligently. But he was blown away minute by minute, second by second, day by day, by God's mind, which he could never learn enough about God's mind. That's why angels stand at the throne of God and constantly say, holy, 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 is because they're learning about God in eternity. When we get to heaven, will we still read the Bible? Absolutely. What do you think Billy Graham's preaching out of right now? We, we think we get the Bible? We don't get it. We're getting this much of it. But God says his word is eternal. It will outlast heaven and earth. Though heaven and earth pass away, my word will never. So listen, when you get to heaven, am I gonna get to preach in heaven? Yes. I'm not gonna be preaching to get people saved or to turn from sin. I'm gonna get to preach. Let me tell you, oh my God, you wouldn't believe, I was in the book of Micah and I've never saw this before, ever, and everybody, you gotta hear what God just revealed to me in Micah. And oh, by the way, I was with Micah four minutes ago, and, and then I was with David and he told me about Goliath, and I never realized when he threw that stone. Look at what it said. I never saw that before. It's eternal. Will you get, will Toby Mack get to write music in heaven? Will my bride get to create new music in heaven? I sure hope so. I know this, that there's a radio station in heaven. And my girl's on it all the time. There's television. There's entertainment in heaven. If you want to be an actor or actress, there's plays in heaven. There's businesses in heaven. There's restaurants, there's, uh, dry cleaners. I don't know what kind of bu- there's construct. Listen, my friend John Paddy, if he gets to heaven and can never build again, that's his dr- that's his, he can't, he'll break stuff to build it. My, my father-in-law Tommy, i- if things never break in heaven, it, just because it breaks doesn't mean it's sinful. Well, uh, so there'll be auto mechanics in heaven? I think so. I think there'll be pe- I think there'll be teachers. I, I think we're gonna train our children in heaven. See, listen, heaven is this place. It's a physical place. Again, I hate it when people die. I don't like death. I don't like funerals. Um, and recently personally in our family, we've, we've lost a loved one. But let me ask you a question. If, if, if I said to you right now on, on whatever, YouTube or whatever, if I said to you, hey, listen, this is my last broadcast. You're never gonna see me again. Stacy and I are moving to Fiji. Or we're gonna go to some Simona Island that nobody lives on. And look, where we're going, there's no internet. There's no telephone communication. There's no cell towers. There's no mail. You can't float bottles and notes to us. Um, you can't do a drive-by and wave out the window of your cruise boat. We're just going to this place and we'll never be seen again, but just know this, I love you. And, you know, in, in a hundred years, I'll see you there or something. You'd be sad and we would have a going away party. But you would know, yeah, Cameron, I mean, oh man, those days were great, but I know he's, yeah, he's alive. He's over there on that island. I don't know. Freco went to some island. He thought that's what God wanted to do. I don't know. He doesn't even write anymore. Listen, heaven's a place. Our loved ones that know Jesus, they're in this real place. They're trying on new shoes. My wife will be ecstatic. There's currency in heaven. Listen, um, will we have fun in heaven? Yes. Could you imagine, listen, um, I'm a big Toby Mack fan. In heaven, I, I just can't wait. Toby Mack's gonna come on and say, hey, listen, I've been working for six months on a new album. And, uh, Stacy Corbin's opening for me. She's been working on a new album. We're gonna debut our new music next Friday night at the Coliseum down by the, the, uh, you know, down, down by the, the city park. I, I'm going. If, if, if Toby Mack gets to heaven, if Amy Grant gets to heaven, if Chris Tomlin gets to heaven and all they could sing is Old Rugged Cross and Amazing Grace for the rest of their life, how boring will they be if they can't create, how bored will they be if they can't create new music? So this idea that, that Picasso can't paint and, uh, Kirk Cameron can't create new movies and, you know, are, it's not logical. Heaven's a place of imagination, mind blow. So God is taking us to this new place. Will there be adventure in heaven? Absolutely. So I know I've talked a lot about heaven and, and, um, but I just want you to really dive, dive in. What's your body gonna look like? There's a, there's a great book by John Burke out on heaven. There's some great movies on heaven. Um, but just make sure that what we're reading and studying matches up with what the scripture says. And some of my ideas may be out there and I'm good with that. But, but I think they're a little more realistic than we're just gonna go to heaven and sit in our mansion. I mean, in your mansion, are the walls all gonna be white? Or are you gonna have some color coordination going on? Are they just gonna be like, do I have a toaster in heaven? Man, I think so. Can I burn toast in heaven? I think you could burn toast in heaven. Oh, because I think it's life. There won't be fear and pestilence, envy, strife, backbiting, gossip. But there will be life like we always wanted. That's what heaven's gonna be like. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We'll be back tomorrow for the end, the last chapter of the book. Chapter twenty-two, uh, we'll wrap up our study in heaven and the book of Revelation. God bless you. Thank you so much for your time. It's an honor to be with you. Lord bless my friends. Give us a vision of heaven. Let us know that we're going to a place, a real place. Let us know that there'll be green grass, fruit trees, houses, parties. And oh, by the way, we'll get to see Jesus. Let me end with this. Heaven will not be heaven if Jesus isn't there. Heaven could have all the cool things, the family reunions, all your loved ones, you get to see them, but heaven without Jesus is not heaven. What will make eternity the best thing ever is that we'll be with God. God bless you. See you tomorrow night, session twenty, six thirty. See ya.